So I moved to accept the minutes as written from our meeting.
Second, good buddy?
Second.
Are there any comments, corrections, changes? All in favor? Yes? No? Thank you. We do not have public comment. Therefore, we move on to the director's report.
Okay. So we had a, probably all know, did anybody come to the book sale yesterday? Or it was not Saturday? So apparently that was a raging success. They raised $742. That was before deducting expenses, but that was good. Did good business on all fronts with this thing that they were selling. So they worked very well with that. I also want to mention that the Hadley Samplers Program that took place, was it two Sundays ago? I'm not sure what the name is.
Was this in cooperation with the historic society?
They had 52 attendees for that program, which was great for Sunday. So our final total for LIGMAC came through. We got $13,006.71 for the year. As far as I know, that's the most that we've ever gotten. I'm not really sure why so much more, but it's great.
Is that number in the report itself?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And so speaking of LIGMAC, as we did in the last fiscal year, I'd like to request the authorization to do what we did in the same amount for substitute staff, to have $1,500 up to $1,500 allocated for substitute library staff. Today, we've spent $828 of that $1,500 for that purpose. We'll probably spend a couple hundred dollars more before the end of the fiscal year. So I think $1,500 is a very good number. And then I'm also going to request that the trustees consider increasing using LIGMAC funds for the year FY23, the assistant director's position, from 32 to 37 and a half hours, making that a five day full time.
So could we just pause for just one second? My computer, like the PDF reader is spinning the wheel and I can't look at the report to read. Well, I need to be able to copy it. I just, if I can just take like a second here to...
Did you mean to say for FY24 or FY23?
It says you know it's FY24. Like in the...
Yes, in FY24. Sorry, I may have just opened it if I said that. But yes, this is where Yvonne coming here started July.
I was pretty sure that's what you meant. Now, now my computer's happy. I opened it in Reader and I'm good now, thank you.
Well, you're always good.
Where was I? Where do you need me to pick up?
The requests on the position.
So requesting that the trustees authorize $6,412.12 to increase the assistant director's hours, 32 to full time at 37.5, making it a five day full time position for FY24. And then when it comes to the budget cycle for FY25, we would make the proposal to make that part of the list.
So can you just like give us the context? Last time you asked for something like this, it was the teen librarian and the reason, you know, at the time, you know, there's a, the real reason not, you know, wanting to have someone more, you know, have more hours. And that was one of the reasons that, you know, people have given for leaving the library because they didn't have enough hours, et cetera. So like, just is this the same situation?
So it's, it's, it's a, I mean, it's a combination of both. It's a combination of something that's being driven, the conversation's being driven by a staff member who has been looking for more hours for some time and trying to gradually satisfy that because we need it. If we didn't need it, we wouldn't ask for it. But we're so busy that it would make sense for that position to be here. So as it stands with the budget that we requested, that position is going from the shift ending at 3:30 in the afternoon, even though I'm here until 5:00. She's not going to be here until 5:00. She'll be here a full day for Tuesday and Thursday. She's here a full day Wednesday, Friday. So what we're hoping to do is to have her here for the good day, whether that's Monday or Saturday. I personally prefer that she's here Saturday, but we're going to have to, you know, bridge that, go across that bridge when we get to it. But I would like to see, you know, another experienced staff person here on Saturday. Because I think that's the day where we're sort of lightest on, you know, experienced service people and the parents' experience. Rather than having like four of us here on Monday, it'd be better to have three on Monday, maybe on Saturday. So I mean, that's what I'm going to be recommending and trying to do.
And this is, this position is already benefited. So this doesn't make any changes to that, is that correct?
Yes, although there will be some change to how the benefit, I mean, this will, benefits are appropriated in the past. It's not full time, so there will be some costs, but that's not something that we're budgeting for. It's five hours of additional vacation time. It's not some five hours. It's whatever the provision is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's not something that's going to like cause any issues. We don't have to like deal with the town, right? Like, are we...
We have all, I mean, if, if, that's a good, that is actually a big point. I probably need to go and talk to Joan about that. Because I think last time when we discussed this about the library position, there was, there was a cost associated with the benefits and we covered those. So maybe we can, maybe we can take that and solve it the next week.
Oh, how about if I make a motion to authorize the expenditure in FY24 of up to $1,500 for substitute staff, $6,412.12 to cover five additional hours by the assistant director and if necessary, additional funds to cover the difference in the cost of benefits to be paid out of LIGMAC.
Yeah, that, I think that should cover it. I mean, obviously you could go and they could have some objection to doing it. Not because of money, but I don't, I don't really know the rules.
I mean, in the past, in the previous instance, I think, yeah, this was all, the expense was authorized by the trustees. It's, the funding is for the trustees to spend without, you know, any condition for as long as it's like...
Of the LIGMAC, yes. But if the benefits, if whatever the incremental amount is, is for whatever reason not accepted by Town Hall, we want you to be able to do this in any case. And yes, that is a legitimate use for LIGMAC funds.
Yeah. I mean, I presume that they would expect us to pay for that cost. But it's not going to be a question that they say, hey, you know.
Right. And you don't know what that cost is. It's going to be not a huge sum by any stretch of the imagination. And given that it is an unknown and given that we have LIGMAC funds to cover that, I would like this to move forward and be settled today rather than...
Great. And just, I mean, for context, as it says in the report, the current balance that incorporates the most recent and that is $95,440.
Which just got $13,000.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Let us know if there's any...
I will, I will report back next month. So the next issue, not an issue, but the, I just wanted to report back that the long planned installation of the gardening bench, the potting bench outside of the children's department finally happened. The hooker, the school metal braces that was installed and it looks really nice. I sent a picture of it to Alan and Moskin because they both were involved in getting it done and they were both pleased that it's there like talent. So take a look at that at some point when you have a chance when they're over there.
Do we need to vote on the other part of the request, which is the $1,500? All of that was in the...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So in the meantime, I had requested a quote from Bear Street to add locks to the cabinets in the children's storeroom because we had people who knew their signs on the cabinets saying, please don't rattle through our stuff. People were going through our stuff. Some water disasters, some, some big messes. And so I requested Bear Street to give us a quote for adding locks to those cabinets so that we could make sure they were secure and nobody, you know, children eat something they shouldn't eat. And that is, that is going to be $875 to add six locks.
And is this still, we would cover this under the remaining, you know, balance from our...
I think that we can do that, yeah.
I move to authorize the payment of $875 to Bear Street Millwork to be paid out of our balance from our construction budget.
Any further discussion?
Paid from the balance of, sorry, the construction.
Construction funds. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay. I did send around the quarterly statements from the community foundation. As far as the donor wall, I did not talk, I did talk to Dan the other day because a donor had a concern about their plan for their, for their gift being overdue. I sent him to ask him to see if he could speed that up. He said that he would. He also said that he thought that the wall would be delivered on time, that he could accommodate the timeline for the reception.
Okay.
But I don't have what I actually...
Okay. Because I would like to pull the trigger. I do have two quotes back on the, from the two design companies. They're pretty close. The, the one in Hadley is 141. So I was just going to go with that. It's the lower of the two. But before I ordered them, I was going to make sure that you felt confident.
I feel confident. If you, if once you say we're doing this, then I'm going to...
Okay.
Send him an invitation.
So that is all.
So I will do that. I will, I will order them. We have some sort of addressers.
Order them is as in invitation?
The invitations to the event, which will be June 10th. We put down a time of 5:00 PM. I know Maureen's working on the liquor license. So then all the rest of the pieces will just have to fall into place. So anyway, we're just, one piece is...
That's all I have.
At our last meeting, we reviewed the director's job description and vote, oh. Had a preliminary conversation and discussion. And so we are now asked to vote on, to accept the job description with the elements that were incorporated to reflect more accurately the director's duties. Is there any further discussion about that? And if not, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the revised job description.
I will make a motion to approve the job description. And if anyone has any further comments, okay.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Related to that, I've mentioned before that I think it would be advantageous for the library and the director if we developed a process to review the director's performance. And I am happy to be part of that committee. And if there is someone else who would like to join me in figuring out how to make that work, I would be delighted to have another pair of eyes, ears, thoughts. Not that everyone isn't welcome to provide feedback, but just in order to come up with a plan. Because it's easier to react to a plan than it is to sit around the table and hashed all of that out. Is there anyone who would like to or has any interest? Okay, thanks, Susan.
I also think you might want to put it out there again next, when we have some new members. Because that is sort of a relatively low lift way for somebody to do something, you know, outside of just coming to the meetings. Versus like, you know, oh, I'm going to be the clerk, right? Then you're on the hook every one of the stuff, so...
I will be sure to ask them about that. Jess, do you want to talk about getting back to community feedback?
Yeah, I don't have too much to discuss. Just, I think where we had started and left that project was the idea of having a small working group to develop, to develop this. Certainly working with Patrick and maybe someone else also from the library staff. But, you know, incorporating a survey. But I think we also talked about hosting some listening sessions as well. But similar to what you just described, kind of working group that can develop a plan and bring it back to the trustees. So I think to call it a working group, I might have someone to join me.
Well, I would be happy to help, but I would also say the same thing.
Yeah.
Like next month.
Yeah.
Just in case.
Would it be useful to have a conversation perhaps now to inform the working group about the kind of information we are looking for and what the purpose is?
I can, I can certainly say kind of what I remember us discussing as the purpose of this. And, and I would be happy to be corrected or ideas added to it or sort of rethought. My sense is that what was really driving this is the feeling of being kind of settled into the library at this point. And, and knowing that there's possibilities for additional programming or services or kind of shifts in priorities that the new building kind of allows for and that this sort of change in usage post pandemic might suggest. And that a place to understand community priorities. This would be, this would be a way to understand some community priorities, both for regular users and people who perhaps live in town but don't use the library. I did put that in terms of like more the library can do. And so I also want to temper that to say what the library might do differently. Because I don't think we need, we need more, more, more. But a sense of what is the community value? And, and that can help shape priorities. So it doesn't have to be additive, I guess, is what I...
Well, no. But if there were additional things that the library could do, it can certainly be helpful to have a list of those perhaps in order of priority so that as we are able, we might be able to respond.
Yeah. So demonstrating a need for growth. Yeah.
And I know we talked about like potentially, you know, requesting funding to be open for more hours in the future. So, you know, if that were something we were going to do, that could be an additional benefit of the survey. I did look at the one you sent over and they do ask about hours there. But, you know, we could do something similar. If we were going to be open more hours, what, when will those hours be? That type of thing.
Yeah, I think to Jessica's point too, is asking like, how can we readjust what we already have instead of adding more hours? Saying, when are the lows, you know, the low points of attendance versus the high times of attendance and adjusting accordingly? So I think that would be useful information. When are you most likely to use a library? When do you think libraries most helpful be open to the public?
And I do think that having staff involved in this conversation, even, you know, from, even just to, as this working group gets going, just to have a brainstorming session to say like what's important here. What are you, what are people saying to you over the circulation desk? Maybe for the first time, I would say, like starting literally this year, I've had multiple people asking us when we're going to start providing hotspots, which no one has ever asked for, for here. But now they are, which is kind of surprising. But we just haven't, we've never had people ask for it. We've had multiple people ringing it up because they're saying, oh, I'd be getting them from the war. So I'd be getting them from the generals or wherever. And so those are the kinds of things that you don't know until you, you know, just sort of sit down with the staff and say, what are you, you know, what's, what are people saying?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, what do you hear? What do you see?
Would it be helpful to have almost like a suggestion box, you know, for the public to say, you know, tell us what you think, what you want, you know, drop in a suggestion or an idea?
Could, maybe. I mean, I think it would be great to take that idea and have it like set up so that it's specifically feeding the questions that we want answered. I mean, I think people, I, I think having something like that could never hurt, but I think most people are not prepared to ask for things. They don't tell you exactly what they want. Maybe not everybody, but, but as far as like being an indicator, you know, community demand, like someone coming up and saying, when are you going to have hotspots? Indicates to me that there's probably five more people that are thinking it.
Well, that's sort of my idea that, you know, there are, there are people who like the anonymity of just dropping something off, you know, that don't want to.
Right. And I think a well-designed instrument, a survey, or something that, you know, that is, that allows for you to do that while also collecting the information that specifically are interested in knowing about, how do you like our hours? How do you like?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't know who you are and where you live.
I wonder...
I think those, I'm sorry. I just, I think a suggestion box in a survey serve different purposes that might overlap, right? I think having a suggestion box is in part just like a way for people to feel like they've got a place. Like, oh, the library wants suggestions. But it's not going to give us data about how many people want things to stay the same or...
Yeah, I mean, even at the bottom. But in a survey, you could put, yes, a suggestion box.
And some of those suggestion boxes can be helpful for things that wouldn't be captured in a survey like, you know, hey, when I'm in at 4:00 PM, the bathroom is always messy. Or something like that that can then help Patrick make the case to the town to get, you know, get more cleaning, just the more immediate things. So yeah, I don't...
I was wondering if it would be more useful to administer the survey and then have either a physical suggestion box or something on the new website when it shows up to allow people to be able to continue to provide feedback. I would, I would hate for the suggestion box to in some way have somebody think, oh, I already told them what I think, so I don't want to tell them again. Because I think the, the survey, as you said, and as Allison pointed out, has, can be more beneficial in helping us make a case, you know, for changes in terms of staff members. If there's going to be a change in hours, because that clearly would have an impact on them. Or if it eventually has budgetary implications.
I think it might also be interesting and helpful if we kind of, instead of like trying to come up with one, you know, because people get survey fatigue and they don't want to do something that's too long. But I mean, I don't know what, for a community the size, what, what a good sample size would be. But having several surveys that are designed to cover specific topics, like how you feel about programming, if we're going to go into...
No one's going to do that. If they, they'll, well, they'll get confused. They'll, they will see another survey and they'll say, I just did the library survey.
Right, but they won't do it, but the next 20 people may have seen the last one, you know.
Maybe. But it's like, I, I think like from a survey, you know, professional, like you use your opportunity, make it as tight of a survey as you can to get your information and then supplement it with like focus groups.
Yeah.
In the, like, everyone will get confused when they were sending out, I don't remember which building committee survey. See, I can't even remember, but one of them, either the Russell School or something. A number of people responded and said, I just took this. And they hadn't, they'd taken a different survey from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that was like, was asking, you know,
Similar.
Similar type of things. And it wasn't even like the same logo or anything, but even that, they got confused. I mean, the Russell School one had like a big picture of the Russell School on it. And still people said, I just took the survey. Why are you sending this to me again? So if we send out multiple library surveys, I just don't think that, like, we need to, we need to take our best shot.
I think one way to manage that is to have it set up so everybody doesn't necessarily see every question. So if you answer in one way, yes, I'm interested in programs. If it's, your answer is no, then you go on to the next topic.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And I think that goes some way to minimizing survey burnout.
Yeah, people either going to take it or they're not going to take it. If it's too long, they're going to stop. But the, you know, what I'm concerned about is just sending too many surveys. Nobody's going to pay attention. I mean, this, this is real. So I know where they go confused, I already took it.
Yeah, I think being as precise as we can about what we actually want to learn about at this point, keeping it as short as possible and skip logic and all that stuff, I think is important. I mean, just, I did a quick skim of the East Hampton survey and I don't know if, when that one went out, if it's in skip logic. But I was like, I would, I would have quit halfway through this. This is so long.
It is long, right?
But they're also making a case for a new library.
Right, yes. No, that's had a very different focus.
It's a different, yes. But I think, yeah, I think being very specific about what it is we're looking for right now, like the information that we need for planning for the next, you know, we should decide, like two years, five years.
Yeah.
And, and not asking more than, than we need. And, uh, and not asking more than, than we need. Cause then we just have more data that we don't know what to do with. People have made suggestions about things that we're not prepared to act on, et cetera. So.
Yeah, right. Well, that's the point. Like, so for example, one of the things that they have is, are there parts of the collection you would like to see the library buy more of? Right? So my first question would be to Patrick and the staff, would you do anything differently based on the answer to that? Or is our building, our, you know, what we already know about the folks who are coming in? Do you already have a good idea of what you would do? And do you already have a plan? Because if you are not going to change what you're doing in terms of ordering for the collection, let's not ask this question. Like, are you, are you honestly like struggling with what should we buy? I don't know. Should we invest here? Should we invest there? If that's a real question you have, I would ask that question, but if, if you're not, then I just wouldn't answer it, you know?
I think one of the things I heard you just say is like, we need to like take an inventory of what we already know. Right? Like if you already know like what parts of the collection need more development because you've got circulation records that tell you that, then we don't need to ask that in survey. So that'll be a, a key part, I think, that you and the staff can fill in is what, what, what do we, what do we already know that we don't need to try to know again?
Versus some things that are unknowable, like the, for the people who are not coming to the library, what are the barriers? Right? You don't have any data on them because they're not coming. So that's to me, a, a bigger opportunity to say, hey, how can we really add something that would bring additional people in? Or if we have very specific questions like around hours, you know, which of these hours would you prefer to, you know? Cause a lot of this stuff, like you guys, you guys have a lot of information that you collect yourself and because you guys have, you know, we have the benefit of, most of the staff have been here a long time. You guys know a lot about who comes in, when, when, you know, what programs people are coming to, like, we already have a lot.
We do, but I think there's something to be said for just for asking general questions about like how, you know, how would you rate you know, the collection that you find, you find it useful, you find it relevant, again, on a scale or what have you. Because I do think that there is a tendency also for people, for the staff when they've been doing something for a long time to make their own assumptions about this is what they want, this is what they're always wanting. And, you know, again, unless they're here, otherwise they may not, you know, know what question to ask. They may not be familiar with something that someone wants because it's something that they're not familiar with.
So let me ask you a question and it, maybe I'm just getting into the weeds, but when I was going through this survey, I was like, you know, there's so much now that's invisible. You know, are you getting it from Hadley? Are you aren't? Are you not? Like, for example, if you order from Libby, where does that come from? Like, would I, like, would a person know where it comes from? Like, is it coming from Hadley? Is it just coming from C W Mar?
You're talking, when you say Libby, you're talking about electronic.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
That's a, that's a, you know, when I say a community investment, I mean, like a consortium investment, they buy one or two of their membership. They've come up with ways to sort of cater to the demands of individual libraries or communities where they say, well, we don't find things that we want in this. So we want to be able to buy, you know, designs and, you know, or treatment for our local patrons. And so that, that is, that is something that we have today taken advantage of. Um, because again, I haven't really heard a lot of specific complaints about what is on Libby or isn't. Or have, have, I have my good and then say, I, I really wish that you had ordered, you know, these things that aren't available. So I'm trying to create more trouble, more problems than I, than I already have. So.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for trouble. And what I'm, I'm sort of getting at is there are, like, the boundaries are now kind of blurred.
Sure.
I, I, I asked that question because I don't know. If I order a physical book, I can see, is it here at Hadley? And if I put a hold on it, I know that someone here is going into our shelves and grabbing it for me.
Uh huh. You think that, that that's what's going to happen, but that's not the way the system actually works. So that is, that is a common misconception. Because really the way the system works is that the first library that has an available copy that runs that report is going to pull it from the shelf, even if it's not Hadley. There's no way for the patron at the patron level to, to request a specific item, a specific library requested at the title level. And then whoever is, you know, busy pulling, you know, pulling older requests goes and pulls it from the shelf. And so we get a lot of people that come in and say, I just placed this hold a half an hour ago. Is it at the desk? Like, no, you know, that, that's not the way it works, but it, it's still on the shelf. I'm gonna grab it for you.
But see, that's so, like, how do I know then if I, like, even then, I didn't know. I assumed if it was Hadley, I would get it from Hadley. Otherwise, you know, it just arrives when it arrives. But I think a lot of people don't know, you know, to, to this very particular thing, what, what's in the Hadley collection versus not? We, you know, does Hadley facilitate getting the book? So I think we have to think about our questions a little bit more maturely.
Yeah, and the things, the things that people, you might say, do you find the things or are you, are you able to get the things that you want through the Hadley library? A lot of times, if you're saying, I really want, you know, for instance, this week, we've been getting a lot of people saying, I really want that Prince Harry book. And, you know, so they're like, where's the Prince Harry book? Well, there are four hundred and fifty holds on that.
Oh, wow, really?
On that title and there are two hundred something copies in the system. So, you know, it's gonna be a little while and.
Keeps telling me it's available on Libby and I keep scrolling past it. Don't want it.
So you're gonna get eventually, the, the copy that you get more than likely not gonna be Hadley's copy, because that, Hadley's copy is gonna be going to somebody in Worcester or somewhere, wherever, where it circulates. But the question really is, you know, by the arrangement that we have as being members of this consortium, are you getting the service that you?
Yes.
That's really the question.
Right. It doesn't really matter that it says, you know, Hadley on the barcode.
That's right.
Getting what you need.
Yeah. Exactly.
So that is, that would be a question to ask. Are you getting, are you satisfied with the service that we provide?
Yeah.
I think, you know, what the former question tries to get around address is when you walk in the library and you are browsing or you are looking for reference materials on whatever the subject. Do we generally have in the building what you want or something related to what you want? Which is, which directs our collection development rather than the broader, I want to read all the Daniel Silva novels in order. We only have half of them that are the odd numbers. Can I get the even numbers? Yes. And I don't know if your statistics about I L L can tell you over, you know, some period of time, how many people are using it?
Are you using it by a great lot?
Yeah. How many individuals as well as how many requests?
Yeah, we, we, we have that information. I mean, what it tells you, I don't know. I mean, there, libraries are either net borrowers or net lenders.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know what we say. I mean, I know that we're a net borrower when I'm a net lender, but larger libraries are net lenders and smaller ones are net borrowers. Borrowers. But, um, but again, what that, what that tells you, I don't know. Because again, like you, you know, in a community of five thousand, you know, what do you expect? That we only have so much collection space and we can't, we can't possibly have it again.
Oh, right. No, no. I understand that, but I guess I'm wondering, is there a way to sort of browse quickly through either the categories or the call numbers of I L L requests and get some sense, you know? Is there a big call on seven, four, six, which is Fulton? Are there a tremendous number of rooms there? Are there asking for cookbooks? Are there biographies? Are there areas of fiction or specific authors? Does that in any way inform our collection development? What, what kind of difference would that make if we had that here versus having to obtain it through the consortium? I mean, the, in the end, somebody gets it come hell or high water. But I think maybe that would be a way to look at are the assumptions currently being used to select items? Do those need to be tweaked based upon I L L information data? I don't, I mean, it would at least be a quantitative look at things rather than just a subjective one. Or, you know, you have two people ask for something in one week, but does that mean no one else has asked for the same thing in the last two years?
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, a lot of this, a lot of this is also is observational and the staff handle a lot of materials all this, all this.
Absolutely.
And you see what's coming across and, oh, I've seen this two or three times. What is this? And, you know, oh, y'all have it and look, there are a lot of holes. So a lot of it is just sort of investigation just awareness of like what's, what, what people are asking for. Like, again, it's everything. Like, obviously it's a huge bestseller. It's very popular. It's, you know, it's all in the media. And so there's a lot of interest in that particular book and, and subjects related to other books. So, um, I mean, there's a lot of it is, it, there's a, there's a science to it, as you're saying, with, you know, examining statistics and see remarks provides lots of great statistics. We can see, you know, all the things that are, that are in demand. And then there's, there's the art of it, which is knowing.
Oh, absolutely.
And the sense of, um, we've got a lot of compliments over, over time. We always have about the kinds of thing, like the criticism of the things that we order for the library. And that is the happy byproduct of having a bunch of people here who all contribute to that ordering, who all have different perspectives and it's not just any one person necessarily doing all the ordering. And having like a very narrow sense of like, well, I just order, you know, whatever's near or close to best seller. Let's do that. But we also will end up getting a lot of other things that people are happy that they found here, almost like a, you know, just serendipitously.
It is also a treasure.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I, again, I would like to hear from people generally speaking, like, how do they think that we're doing? Are you satisfied with what you find when you come here? What are, I would like to hear what we're lacking, if we're lacking anything.
I would just like to add very quickly that the fact that you have staff members who have been here a long time and who know the patrons, that also informs it.
Absolutely. Yeah. And that is where it's weighing gold, really. I mean, you know, people, the staff here know people by name and what they want to read. So, you know, you can't really replace that without having someone here for five, ten years.
So anyway, I'm happy to help. And maybe we'll ask again next month and, yeah.
I'm wondering kind of what, what kind of a timeline we want for this. Where it started summer? Do we wanna like work on a plan for this during the summer in order to launch it in September? Do we wanna do it during, I know sometimes people wanna hold off on doing something like this during the summer just because they're not paying attention. You know, or do we want a quicker turnaround and just see what we can do in these four months?
You know, we're not, we're not going to be developing the, the next budget or s, I mean, what, through the end of December. So we have like six months before we need to turn something in that, that might benefit from that kind of feedback. I mean, I don't think there's any reason to wait, but I think it would be good to just sort of like start general, you know, brainstorming and talk about the real ideas of what, what, what would we like to know more about? You know, have that work group talking about it. Because again, staff are gonna bring things that, um, the trustees will not bring.
Oh, absolutely.
From what they see.
Well, I think to develop a draft timeline and to develop what are the methods that we want to use to get feedback? You know, are there groups that we want to target? Are there agents? You know, would you wanna have a specific get together with the friends? All members of the friends, not necessarily just the board. Or, you know, a group of, you know, the folks who show up for Luna's Friday morning thing, the little tiny people. I mean, I don't know if those are groups that we'd want to, but I'm trying to think of.
And we probably don't know yet. You, usually after you do your survey, then you say, oh, here's some, you know, high points, things we need to sort of back on. Oh, who could be the best group to give us feedback on that? And that's when you start putting together calls for focus groups. That's usually how it works. So if we were, so if we said, okay, we wanna have recommendations in order to inform our budget process in December, we would wanna have it all done by November. I'm just kind of backwards. So if you say, okay, well, we would have, you know, we'd wanna try to have some focus groups in October, maybe early November, cause then you start bringing it to the holidays. People are not gonna be thinking about coming to library focus groups. Right? So you wanna make sure that you're, you know, if you're gonna send it out in September, right, keep it open for three weeks. Sort of, you know, take a couple of weeks to at least look at it. So we can say, do we wanna have focus groups? And then how do we feed this information back? So, I mean, that, that's a rough timeline if people don't wanna do this summer. But, I mean, it's still doable.
Yeah, sounds very doable. And I think that gives us time too to be very careful about what we're putting out in the survey and get to talk with the staff.
Right, so this, so this. Development.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Which gives us plenty of time and, you know.
Yeah. So it sounds like you and I and Patrick and anyone else who's gonna be involved in the initial meeting, maybe we find a time sometime between now and our next meeting to.
I don't know. I would leave for the new people. I know I keep saying that, but I want them to feel like they have the ability to contribute, right? I don't know. You were the newest new person, like, does it, is it too much pressure to, to say, hey, you guys wanna join us? Or is it nice to have a way to kind of jump in and immediately contribute?
I think it helps to, to be part of a group effort because then you don't feel like you have to own it, um, and then
Yeah.
fail. Um, but that there's other people who already have experience and know how to do these. And it gives you a chance to sit and listen and think about what are my strengths? What do I know? What experiences have I had that I could contribute to doing this? So.
I'm looking at the.
What is?
I'm just thinking, if we got it started, if we just kind of had an initial meeting and then there basically were kind of on ramps for people to join and along the way.
What if post-election, I send something to the two new members and identify potential opportunities for their participation so they can think about it a little bit? Right. If you have interest in this thing, please be in touch with Jess. If you have interest in whatever. If you want to know more about either of these.
Yeah, that's a big compromise because even then if someone says, hey, I wanna be a part of the, uh, you know, survey committee or whatever. Community outreach. And we could say, hey, we're scheduling a meeting for whatever, June first. Can you come?
And I think I would also say, this is, this is not to say this is your only opportunity to join. If you want to hear more and decide you're interested, then you're welcome to. But I think that at least allows things to continue to move forward rather than wait from just meeting to meeting to meeting. I will be happy to do that. I don't have anything else. Does anyone else have items that we need to cover?
Do we have a friends report? I know what Lucy does about that.
What?
A friends report?
I'm trying to remember what, I can't remember the last friends meeting.
It was probably planning for Saturday mostly.
It was mainly that joint was, at that point, was not there. There was a lot, there was some discussion about whether or not to go ahead with the scholarship. It was here, they they hadn't made any plans. And then somebody said, why don't we sculpture then? So then they, uh, then they, they kind of debated back and forth about whether to, to go through with it or not, offer it. And I believe Joanne stepped in and got together and distributed it to the school. So I believe that's all. But I don't know. It's, it's all that action kind of happened over the middle between meetings. So, the meeting is next Tuesday. And I'm trying to remember if they, I'm trying to remember the officer situation. I can't remember if they noted on, they noted on officers?
Yeah.
Now that Joanne stepped down, I don't remember. I'm not sure if she had it like that. President, bro, jeez, just, I don't know.
So is the next meeting, I, I'm just like thinking, well, if Maureen is no longer going to be a trustee after the election, right? When is the meeting? When is today? I'm sorry, I'm looking at my calendar here. So that would be the 16th. But their meeting is on the 16th. So I can plan to go to that meeting because this way I can also sort of remind them that they said, yes, I'd like to co-host this thing on the 10th and maybe I can get some more volunteers.
You were at that meeting, proposed that, yes.
That, was that the last meeting they had? Oh, okay. Well, then I always have the last meeting, but I didn't see the whole thing. So I missed the whole scholarship thing and everything. I just came, said, you guys.
Well, it didn't even happen, that happened like at the meeting, like just over a year, somebody said, what about it?
And is it always at seven?
Seven.
Okay. I just put it on my calendar. So I, I, I can go to that. I know we'll need another, like, regular liaison, but in the meantime, since we're doing this joint thing, just makes sense.
I will mention that as also an opportunity to the new folks.
Sounds good. Shall I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
For our second shortest meeting ever?
Yeah.
Second, all in favor.